Okay, we are live.
Good evening and welcome to the November 2nd Dublin City Council Work Session regarding the Dublin 2035 Framework. We are living in these extraordinary times and our flexibility is important in this rapidly evolving environment. Given the current conditions, we have made the decision to conduct our public meeting virtually to help maintain the safety of council, city staff, meeting attendees, and most importantly, digital public. To view this meeting, you can access the live stream on the city's website or the City of Dublin's YouTube channel. A public comment regarding the Dublin 2035 Framework can be submitted in the Contact Dublin City Council portion of the City Council page on the city's website. So we will not have live public comment here in our work session. But please, we welcome your thoughts and have the ability through the Contact Dublin City Council portal, through the council webpage, to send us your thoughts, and we look forward to hearing those, as we do want to accommodate public participation to the greatest extent possible next of this campaign. With that, I will ask our clerk Ian to call a roll.
Yes, Mr. Keeler.
Here.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
Fox.
Here.
Vice Mayor De Rosa.
Here.
Mayor Amrose Grooms.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
And Miss Aludo.
Here.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to ask Homer Rogers to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, justice.
Okay, as I mentioned, this evening's work session is regarding our Dublin 2035 Framework Plan. We have six bullet points to our agenda, some opening comments and the inspiration on the framework plan itself. That conversation will be led by Brandon Brown. We'll have a two-minute share on the World City Takeaways. Brandon will lead as well. Then we'll have some level setting. Brandon and Deviani will work us through that portion of our agenda. We will talk about developing guiding principles, and both Brandon and Deviani will facilitate that conversation as well, as they will review and consensus, and then Vice Mayor De Rosa will take us through the next steps. Yep, that's what is on our agenda this evening. So I would like to go ahead and maybe Kathy, do you want to do a brief introduction?
Great, thank you.
And we'll time it off then, Brandon.
Thank you. Thanks very much for everybody for taking some time tonight. This is a crazy way to do a retreat. It was our hope we could all be together, sitting around a table, doing those retreat kind of things, having good snacks, if all that kind of fun stuff. Here we are. So I so appreciate the work. Staff has spent time on a couple things in prep for this tonight, some cool tools that we're going to try. So we're going to experiment with how communication in retreats might look going forward in the tech world, and Brandon has worked very hard to do that. Our main objectives will be simply to spend some time talking about the future in this kind of crazy format, and the World City sessions were to give us some ability to step out of our sort of current world and to think about that. So we would just want to spend time. If it takes a little more time to do that, and we want to do that as a group, wonderful. And then, as Chris said, secondly, we really want to begin the process of putting together the 2035 Plan, and first steps in that are principles. And so Brandon and team have worked about how do we take some of these concepts that we're going to talk about tonight, and how might we put those forward principles? So those really two big objectives, hopefully we'll work our way through that. The other comment is that I know because council has made it very clear that they want staff to be interactive with us. This is a teamwork, we're on this journey together. So when we're reflecting, the staff's going to, you know, take their time too and share their insights and their thoughts, and we're going to try his best to make this a team exercise. And so with that as a backdrop, Brandon, are you ready?
I am, Vice Mayor, thank you.
Uh huh, thanks.
Good evening, members of council and fellow staff members. Tonight will be a little bit different, and I liked some of the comments earlier. I liked that there was some conversation going back and forth, because we're going to try to keep that going, and I know it's really hard in the virtual setting. We've been facilitating a number of different types of groups and activities with city staff and external parties, and it is difficult. So we'll cover a lot of ground tonight. I did hear something about 15-minute retreats, and you guys were close. Tonight, the theme is two minutes. You're going to see that number appear over and over, and I ask for your grace and forgiveness ahead of time, as that part of my role tonight is facilitator, and we have a lot of ground to cover, and we have a lot of voices to hear, and we want to make sure that we get some really good keywords and some principles out in the air floating around that we can all think about. So with that, it's also very highly participative, and with that, I'm going to share my screen, and you have your first task of the evening. So if someone could let me know once you see the screen.
We see it.
We see it, okay. So as I mentioned, we have a series of different activities that we're going to try tonight to get some different words out and get some things grouped together and put even more words to them. So what I would like you to do now is I'm going to start my timer. You'll hear an awful little ding, but it's not awful, because it is the coin noise from Super Mario Brothers. So just keep that in mind whenever you hear this annoying noise, that there is fun and something good behind it. I would like you to spend the next two minutes completing these sentences, however you'd like. We'd really probably want to stick to a word or two, jot them down, start thinking about ones that might float up toward the top. We're not going to ask you to share right now, but we're going to ask you to share a couple of your favorites in a little bit. So the timer starts now. We are about halfway through, and I did want to make sure to mention staff. You are welcome and asked to participate in this, as well as all of their activities this evening. So get out your pencils and your pads, paper, or your phone. Okay, thus ends the first round of activities for the evening. There's your noise. So two minutes, that, think about that for a second, that's a lot of time and not a lot of time. So we're going to keep using that timeframe, though, as we go through and we share. One thing I want to make sure that I don't do is squash conversation. That's really the point, as Vice Mayor mentioned earlier. And so when we're talking and we're sharing our thoughts, complete sentences are absolutely fine. Deviani and I will be furiously taking some notes in the background that we'll use later on, and also use those in future sessions. So with that said, we're not going to share just yet, but what I do want to share with you is the rest of our evening. The next portion I'd like to roll into is what we're going to call our two-minute share. And again, two minutes, we all have just felt what that feels like. I would like to go around the room. I have some techniques. We'll make sure that you know that your turn is coming up. We'll ask for some volunteers, but we definitely want to hear from every council member, and I know from Jenny Roush. And then we would like to hear from some variety of staff members on this. There were a number of really interesting and great sessions that were pushed out there. The idea behind this is what stuck with you? What did you think about after you watched a session? What did you tell a friend or a family member about? What are some of the big words or big themes that came from watching those? After we do that sharing, we'll do one more quick activity, and then we'll just kind of go back to the beginning and kind of just level set so that we know where we're going from there. And then we do have a couple of different activities where we will start extracting some of the words that you've been creating to start building some of these guiding principles, as well as we have some samples that we've prepared just as kind of conversation starters. One thing we have realized through some training and some trial and error and just experience and practice is that when we do these online meetings, it's always good just to be a little explicit about a few things, and I've mentioned a few of these already, where we do want you to participate. So at certain times, it's okay if multiple of us have our microphones unmuted and we're talking. It's okay if we talk over each other. We just find the grace to kind of wait and bring everyone along with us. The two-minute time thing, I hate to do that, but it does really help keep us on track, and we do want to finish up by eight o'clock, no later. And don't worry that if it seems like we're having good conversations, we're making what seems like progress, and we're not getting done, that's okay, because again, this is kind of the first step in a little bit of a longer journey. So just a few things that we ask again for our meeting participants. And with that, what I would like to do is move into our two-minute segments of World Cities, and I will of course ask for volunteers. If anyone is raring to go and sharing what they, what their takeaways from World Cities were, I'll take volunteer. I'm going to stop sharing my screen so that we can, if you don't have it, if you want to turn on your gallery view, it makes it nice so you can see more of your friends as you're sharing your notes. But I think I filibustered there a little long enough that we, any volunteers?
I'm happy to volunteer, Brandon.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Please.
Just so I'm clear, you want two minutes on all of our takeaways from our assignment of what to watch for World Cities.
That is correct, and you know, the two minutes is really a guide, and again, I don't want to stop free-flowing thoughts, and we just want to make sure that we can fit everyone in. If there's conversation during these comments, feel free to unmute and talk. That's, this is the hardest part about doing the virtual meetings, instead of just having continual report outs. Every now and then, I may prompt a question or a conversation if I can, so we'll just ask your forgiveness again, and we'll just see how this goes.
Okay, for the assignments that work for all the cities, for the people of tomorrow and shaping the future of remote work. Cities for People of Tomorrow, it was well-presented in things, but that's kind of been the new urbanism that we've been hearing a lot about for 10 years. So I didn't have a whole lot of new things about cities for the people of tomorrow. They did address a few things about post-COVID world, you know, relative to spacing and that sort of thing. You know, unfortunately, through this, most of the people that were presenting were from big cities, right? There weren't many cities that we could entirely relate to, or even Columbus couldn't entirely relate to. But it was good information. I didn't find a lot of terribly new there. The shaping the future of remote work, you know, that was a very interesting session, and I thought there was a lot of good thoughts there. Again, they were all crystal ball-ish, in my opinion. You know, we spent the last 10 years trying to make creative spaces for people to gather and become creative together, right? And the assumption that they were making was that that wasn't going to really take place post-COVID, in that, you know, offices would, might have a shared office where someone uses it a few days a week, and someone else uses it a few other days a week, things like that. So that'll be interesting to see whose crystal ball is the most clear coming. My two assigned ones were the future innovation cities, and that I found very interesting. It largely talked about European cities and green technology, and how they were basically in terms of human waste, physical waste, those kinds of things, and how to generate power from those wastes, and what those power generating facilities might look like. They had one in Copenhagen that had a green roof. It was actually a sledding, they used it for a ski hill. So I found that one very interesting about how far behind we are in terms of true innovation relative to the environment. My second was the digital world, and that was kind of interesting. They had three experts there, and they were talking about its physical and digital world. They talked a lot about virtual reality and what it would be like to meet other people in spaces virtually, and I guess I'm just maybe a bit of a dinosaur in that I don't, I cannot imagine myself becoming excited about meeting Kathy virtually at the bottom of the Eiffel Tower and having that be a meaningful experience. They seemed to feel like it was going to be a very meaningful experience, and that these VR glasses and that were going to be the way that we interact with one another. I guess I'm just hopeful that they're wrong. And then I watched one on my own because I found it very interesting, and it was called The Great, The Next Great Migration. And it basically was talking about opportunities for cities like Columbus and for communities like Dublin, about the migration out of the larger cities, winners and losers, and how cities like Columbus and like Dublin would be the migratory to cities. And I found that quite interesting, and the challenge for us in that is to figure out what's going to make us attractive if we want to grow that much. We may not, I think that, I think we're under the assumption that bigger is better, and I think maybe we need to check in on that and verify if we all in fact believe that's true. I don't necessarily categorically, but we are going to have to grow in terms of our revenue's going to need to grow and things like that. So I think I exceeded my two minutes, Brandon, I apologize, but that was my summary, and as quick as I could get it out of my mouth. Thanks.
Thank you very much, and that's absolutely fine. I think, you know, two minutes might be a little overreach with the amount of content that you all covered, so for, just for this one time only, I'm going to offer three-minute sharing. Okay, later on, we'll dial it back down to two minutes, but that's great, and I do want to leave any space if there's any immediate comments. I know sometimes those, you know, as you hear things coming from someone else, you want to respond right away or not, but if there's, if there's nothing else, I will look for another volunteer, or I'll have to start picking.
I'll volunteer, Brandon.
Thank you.
It's interesting perspectives of listening to World City, because Chris, you had said that you listened to the Cities for People of Tomorrow, and I actually loved that one. I loved it because it was focused on making cities for people instead of, instead of cities of places. And if you, if, as they carried that forward, what I loved about it was that, you know, modernism concentrated on focusing on the infrastructure and the functionality of a city, whereas making cities for people focuses more on the spaces, the public realm, and how the environment of the city nurtures the people that work and live there. And it was a totally different perspective on how, you know, you grow a city. You don't, you don't necessarily look at it. Like, I think we look very much at economic development and innovation and that sort of thing.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but one point of clarification, I did find it interesting. It was just new urbanism, and I agree with the principles they were saying. It's just that those were the principles, we've been talking about those for 10 years. It was very good, it just wasn't new, so sorry. Keep going.
You know, the way I looked at it, though, is I didn't look at it as urbanism. I looked at it as a holistic view of how you create a great city. And then I did listen to one that was not on my list of to-dos. It was called The Most Livable and Loveable Cities, and two planners from Singapore. One was an architect, an urban planner, and a, I think she called herself a placemaking designer. And Singapore is considered one of the best green cities in the world, which is hard for me to imagine, because I see it all as buildings. But the focus then is not necessarily on urbanism, but on creating environments that literally put the focus on the people first. How does it affect the people, and you build out from there, instead of thinking of, how do you make a city interesting architecturally or economically strong and build out from there? It really, it's really simply focused on comprehensively looking at every aspect of your planning and taking it back and beta-testing it against, how will the people feel within it? And I kind of really like that concept. The other, the other part about watching some of these World Cities was, you know, what it is, I watched the City of Trust, and globally, of course, there are many cities where there is no trust in the government, there is no trust in the city plan, there's no trust in being able to be free and to express yourself on the street. And I think that trust in, within a city, when I looked at the, and I won't give away my answer for Brandon's exercise in the beginning, but one of the things I do think about Dublin is it's a very supportive, a very safe, and a very trusting place to live, which makes us very comfortable here. I think that this question of social environment, and that's what I was hearing as a trend in all the World City talks that I listened to, is that unless the social environment is one of trust, is one of well-being, one of inclusivity, flexibility and its ability to nurture everyone that's in it, accessibility, whether that's in housing or in community engagement, all of those things become really important principles in building a city of the future, because we can get very technologically advanced, but unless we're taking care of the people who live there, technology can hurt us as much as it can help us. So, so I found a sort of a trend in the conversation of getting back to the social and economic well-being of inhabitants within a city. And I think for me, that, that is going to be kind of my guiding, guiding principle on as we move forward, is how we make sure that we don't leave the people that live in the city behind for all of the new trends that are coming down the road. So I thought it was really fascinating, and I also watched the one about Cities at Night, which was really fascinating, because they talked about, I don't know who else watched it, but they discussed the fact that in the daytime, cities are a little bit more conservative in its constraint, the way you live in it. Then when night falls, cities become a different place, in that there's a lot more freedom of expression, whether that's in art or music, there's a relaxation of the social structure. The city takes on a different artistic form, because it goes from being a nighttime, daylit building and infrastructure, to more like artificial light and color. I thought that was kind of fascinating, because we've seen that happen here with the bridge lit up and Bridge Park being a backdrop to the river. So, yeah, but once again, the trend is, what is the social environment within the city feel like as a backdrop to all the things that we do as we build the cities?
Thank you, Councilmember Fox. And just think, we get to enjoy those lights of that bridge even more now that it's dark much earlier in the evening, right?
Exactly, I know.
Councilmember Keeler next, thank you.
Yeah, so I'm going to kind of piggyback on both Jane and Chris's comments. We all watched the same, you know, the same sessions, and what I kind of took away from the, I don't have the name, Cities for the People of Tomorrow, really walkability. What we heard from Brett Crawford and a lot of residents is that Longshore Street being shut down was a tremendous asset through COVID, and I don't know that it needs to change. 2035, we've got a 15-year window, so, you know, realistically, what can we accomplish in the next 15 years? We've engaged Main Street USA and the Historic Dublin Task Force to look at how we can improve that gateway to the city. And so to me, that's, that's our canvas, and if we are to take that canvas, you know, how do we develop that, make it very walkable? To Jane's comment, taking care of the people that we have. Chris said, I don't know if we, if we want to grow that much, do we, do we want to be a big city? Not necessarily, but more amenities, more cleaner air for the people that we have, more mobility, more walkability, all those kinds of things. We have an opportunity to connect the corners, connect Metro Place, connect Bridge Park, all sort of via the Bridge Street Corridor. And so I think that's, to me, that's an area that we can really sink our teeth into and get some of the things that we've taken away from World Cities, implement those there. I watched the migration one as well. It wasn't one of the required ones, but I thought it would be interesting, and, you know, Chris makes a very good point. Do we necessarily want to be the destination for more people? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. The presenter made an interesting comment. He said, where are people coming from and where are they going to? You know, if you want to attract people, you obviously want to be the destination that those folks find attractive, and I think we're doing a lot of the right things. The question is, what do we need to be doing over the next 15 years to keep, continue setting us apart, continue raising the bar? Because there are clearly a lot of, a lot of communities around the United States, let alone overseas, that are making huge headway in that direction. So again, walkability, fewer cars ideally. Chris made the comment a week or two ago that, you know, Longshore Street, streets cost a lot of money to put in place. The infrastructure's very expensive, but sometimes we don't always get things right the first time, and maybe that one street is an opportunity to create more of a walkable thoroughfare, where you park your car, and, you know, there may be street vendors and things like that, food trucks, whatever. That's a starting point, but certainly, as I said, Bridge Street, the Bridge Street Corridor would be an area that I'd really want to concentrate on.
Thank you very much. I would give you congratulations for being under three minutes, but I did forget to start the timer, so the time didn't officially count this time, but thank you. Thanks for sharing. Anyone next? I like this volunteering thing, that way I don't have to call on people. Councilmember Reiner, you win. You had the biggest laugh. I'll take you next. We'll follow that up with Vice Mayor De Rosa.
So mine was Cities at Night in the 15-Minute City, and I got to say that I think when we were young, we all walked through these great European cities, Hamburg and Zurich, and saw how they were all alive at night, and how wonderful it was to walk in there in the dark, and see all the storefronts lit up, and the people walking around, and all the communal events that were going on downtown, and the musicians and things. And here in Dublin, we've been blessed, because we finally have that urban setting, and it's called, of course, the Bridge Street Corridor, and it's taken probably half of a three-quarter lifetime to get it here. So we've been very, very blessed. I saw Cities at Night, Paris is the City of Light, and it has multiple meetings, but I thought it was very interesting, because as already mentioned, we were talking about how some of this really applies to much larger, larger cities than ours. But we have a lot of great opportunities to improve the downtown Bridge Street, old historic area as far as lighting, and everything from lighting the arch bridge, when you're looking at it from the pedestrian bridge on 161, to, you know, all kinds of other things. So that was a very interesting lecture. I have to say that, and it also says that they're 24-hour cities, you know, as already mentioned, that they differ from day to night. The 15-Minute City was very interesting in that locating all your goods, your services, and your recreation within a 15-minute walk or bicycle ride. And again, this again was presented by somebody, I think, that graduated from the Sorbonne and was living in Paris. But, you know, again, those of us who've been to Europe a lot or spent a lot of time in Europe. or spent a lot of time in Europe realize that you can get on a bicycle there and you only need one car if you're going to have a car. And it's usually used for vacations, but you can get on a bicycle and get whatever you want in a matter of minutes if you have saddlebags on your bike. So, you know, we are working on that. And it's very interesting here. We've already progressively worked for areas like Metro Five, where we, we put in pods of residential and commercial activity. And we're, we have, you know, God bless the city council and the city staff because we have already thought about locating those pods within these areas where we're missing residential, we're missing commercial and making, and rounding them out. So, you know, kudos to Dublin for being the progressive city that it is. And also, years ago, we started a program where we acquired land from developers and built pocket parks, mandatory pocket parks or asked for pocket parks because we demanded land when a zoning came in. And so we already have the green space component of that 15-minute city sort of worked out. And again, it's, it's Dublin being very progressive. Cities of Trust was an interesting topic because unlike some neighboring city, government here, we have been very blessed in that our government has been really, people totally concerned and in love with Dublin and weren't in the political arena where they were influenced by power brokers and money people to divest themselves of some of the ideals that make for a great city. So we, we have not sold out in the 30-some years I've been here. We've had a few characters that you might say might have. We pretty much run a really good city where people have joined this government because they really love and care about this city and not cowl down to special interests or financial groups. And that, that applies to our staff too. So I think I already burnt through my two minutes, but that's what I want to say as fast as I can say it to try to make the deadline. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we'll mix it up a little now and hear from a staff member. And Ms. Rouse, you get to go first.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate hearing everyone's perspective. I really liked the Cities of Tomorrow, for the People of Tomorrow also, Jane. I, in the end, felt like the real message of that was, and maybe to the mayor's point, you know, that we have heard this for a long time, but it's really maybe getting back to the basics of that. So simplifying things that we've maybe overcomplicated things. And how do we really get back to making things simple and walkable and approachable and places for people to gather? That that was, that's a really, that was my takeaway from that. I mean, there were some really interesting and innovative ways to transform spaces and do that. But in the end, it really felt like even in this world of COVID-19 and how we're dealing with that, you know, sort of taking back the streets in New York. They were showing, you know, parking spaces being converted into outdoor dining and, and really sort of minimizing, you know, the vehicle and how to make that more pedestrian friendly. And again, those are small ways. I think we talked about this a little bit before we officially started, was kind of overwhelming though, when you look at, you know, how do we, how do we go about doing that and transforming our city and looking at all those pieces and parts and, and doing that? Because it is a lot of maybe undoing some of the things we've done and revisiting that in ways or looking at it in new and different ways, which I, again, wasn't necessarily something I hadn't thought of, but not, not in those terms. So that was really interesting. Similar to the remote working one, I found that to be interesting because I think we are all scratching our heads, questioning, what's, what's it going to be like, you know, in six months from now, a year from now, five years from now? And again, it was, to me, a really simple message of it's, we don't know. And we're going to look at all these various ways to accommodate that. There's going to people, be people that currently are in sort of an all work-from-home status, others that are an all-in sort of status, and then the hybrid. And how do we accommodate that as a city? And I think that's something that Dublin is really great at, looking at all the variety of ways to do things and figuring out how can we accommodate all of those to the extent possible. And yeah, we're not going to know what the impacts of those are, but we need to be thinking about it and, and understanding the impact of that on, on our everyday, everyday life and as we plan for the future. So I'll, I'll air on the short side of conversation so that we can get everybody else's comments. But those are my big, my big takeaways from those two sessions.
Okay, they go short. You owe us, you know, some follow-on comments later on, probably, I think. We'll, we'll figure out some sort, some sort of.
Punishment.
That's right. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say punishment. Another opportunity. How about one of their staff person? Any volunteers? Homer, go ahead.
I'll go and I'll, I'll probably keep it very short here. I just wanted to kind of dovetail onto what Jenny was talking about. I really found the remote working one to be very intriguing because I took my mind outside of just the workplace. You know, the concept of technology that we have today, it's going, and we're experiencing it right now with COVID. Education's going to change and how it's delivered. You know, think about, you know, schools, you know, 15 years from now. Do we think that we're still going to have brick and mortar schools that we're attending? We've seen what's happened with, you know, our malls across the nation, you know, all the online ordering that goes on. You know, how we're worshiping in this day and age and think about what it does 15 years from now? I mean, I've been attending church services online, just as an example. And then, you know, our social interactions, how we're delivering services and what services are going to be needed, you know, 15 years from now, given the environment, you know, in terms of, you know, the telecommunications and everything that's going on. Are people going to be driving cars as much in 15 years, you know, versus what they're doing today? We're already today seeing the automobile and the oil industry have taken, you know, some major downturns. So I just ask, you know, if we're thinking about Dublin, you know, Dublin 2035, how is that going to impact us 15 years from now? So that was really the biggest thing I wanted to, you know, talk about in that regard. And I just wanted to also just say, I have started taking a, a course with Pepperdine University that's just started this past week. That's a certification course. It meets once a week for five weeks, but it's about leading smart cities. And they are very much right in the middle of this very same thing that we're all talking about and experiencing right now, where they're talking about technology and how it's going to affect, you know, how we live and how our, our cities operate, you know, going into the future. So as I go through that some more, if I, you know, over the next four weeks, I'll be more than happy to share with everyone some of the things I learned from that. So I'll shut up now.
Thanks, Homer. I can open it up any follow, again, follow-on comments. I don't want to squash those or just another volunteer from council or staff.
I, I would just say, just piggybacking on Homer and Jenny's comments about remote working, that one of the presenters made a distinction between advisors and the service sector. So someone like Greg, myself, other folks that are giving advice can work from more remotely than, say, a waitress, a waiter, a postman, that kind of thing. So there are certain fields that will always be kind of pinned down and then there are those that won't. Because the question is, over the next 15 years, do we want to be a destination for the, well, I forget what they were calling them, cyber nomads? You know, more or less just somebody that stops for a weekend or whatever, does some remote work, but is on a vacation with their family. How do we, how do we gear up the city to keep folks here in the city of Dublin? What is Cardinal and Nationwide and Wendy's and other? What, what does that footprint look like 15 years from now?
Hey, Brandon, I'd like to volunteer on the heels of what Andy was just saying, if it's all right.
Certainly.
Yeah, so, so first off, I'll highlight some of the things that popped out of me from the Common Two courses. And then I also watched additional one on economics and then another one on housing. So some of my comments will be influenced by those. But in regards to the people, the Cities for People of Tomorrow, the things that jumped out at me, small and agile, I think is our advantage. Mobility for change and influence in so many aspects of, of life in cities is certainly the modes of mobility, that is, the importance of lifestyle and the multi, multi-dimensional impacts that that has on us. And then the relevant and appropriate technology applications in that context. We can't be chasing everything, but what can we do that makes a difference with our, our community and our, our economy and how do we leverage that? And then the inclusive city about participatory, participatory design and, and spaces that are formed from that. And then as far as the future of remote working, one of the, okay, so one of my new words now is digital nomads. So that's, I'm going to, I've got that one jotted down. So, but the professional workspace and connectivity, what I found interesting is, this one really harped on having, they call it Wi-Fi, but we know that as broadband, which hence ties into, to the things we've been doing and the things council wants to continue to do about that in the future of cities. It's critical that we have that, whether the future of work is influencing our offices or not, or whether that's bringing more work here or keeping it here. Happy people and social experiences, right? Make productive, productive workers. Flexible accommodations. And I thought it was interesting, the dialogue they had on the white, the one guy mentioned the white collar versus the blue collar, he called it, which is, that is a niche versus the majority of the population. So where's the majority of the population going to lie as far as workers? Is it going to be those who must show up as essential workers and work in place? Or is it those advisors, the nomads, the people who can work virtually? It's going to be interesting to see how the population shakes out on that in terms of workforce. And then, of course, that, I was interested in how that raised equity issues among workers. And also the fact that probably we're going to wind up with more hybrid solutions than one or the other. It seems like everybody's either saying, oh, everybody's going to go home to work or they're not, and there's nothing in between. But the reality of it is, there's going to be some level of hybrid approach. So here's my takeaways on all of that. I, I think our opportunity lies, and I think we're on the right track in differentiating the office neighborhoods that we have. I think this mixed-use thing we do and like the, I was thinking about the de-cap and trying to, to keep those office parks viable and competitive and, and bringing workers with, not just the mobility, but workers associated with where they work is going to be, I think, what saves our future of work in Dublin. But it's also tied with the parks and the amenities we provide, the social spaces, the placemaking that goes with that so that we have the social interactions that we need. We've got to be green and sustainable for the future because that's what attracts the future worker too, is how is it green and sustainable? And then, of course, the connectedness, which is social, but the connectedness, which is, must, must be digital. I think we do all those things, but how do we repackage that for the future of our workspaces in so that we can stay viable and competitive? So there you go.
Oh, right on the money, Dana. Good job there. I saw Councilmember Peterson's hand go up a couple of times, if you want to get in there.
Thank you, Brandon. A couple, a couple of thoughts. A theme that I keep coming back to in my mind, and I guess I'm going to state the obvious. I, I think we are in the, there is a pre-COVID world and there's a post-COVID world. And those worlds will be dramatically different from each other. And what's really going to be interesting and what I think about is not necessarily what we do for the next six months or year or whatever we have to do to get through this, but what parts of our changes do we take with us into the future, even beyond COVID? You know, there's, so my wife works in an office building in up in Ireland, and the building was purchased the other day. And she said to me, who buys an office building when everybody's going to be working from home? And that sort of hit me. I thought, wow, you know, I mean, that, that is very much going to be a different, a different way of thinking in a different world after we emerge on the other side. Like, I don't think you could really underestimate all those differences and how things are going to look differently. And Chris mentioned how people, the migration from the big cities. I, I think that there is, in my mind, society sort of evolves and it, and it's the pendulum pointing back and forth from, from one extreme. And there could very well be a, a, a trend in the next, you know, with the next generation of getting out of big cities and looking, we may all of a sudden find that, that one of our biggest markets is back to our single-family homes and people trending back in that direction from that urban thing and the walkable and everything. You know, obviously, we've made tremendous strides in that regard. I think it's really important to remember Dublin is not going to be able to expand and grow for the next 20 years like it has for the last 20 years. And so we're going to have to be very, very thoughtful about, we, I don't think we'd want, we don't want as many houses and businesses and everything else that we've had over the last 20 years for the next 20 years because the city of Dublin don't have the space, we don't have the room. We want to maintain that quality of life for the, for the community that's here. And so I think there is, like Dana mentioned, being able to be responsive and sort of mobile and, and respond to the residents' needs. I, I think all of these trends are going to be much, much different in the next 10 years or so because of our COVID experience than they have been in the past, in the last 10. I think, of course, nobody could have anticipated that we would run into a significant event like this. I mean, you think about the last major reset in our, in our society was 2000 and the crash. That was 12 years ago and we've sort of moved past that. I think this reset is going to stick with us. And I think a lot of these issues, the migration from the big cities and, and what do we do to, you know, Chris says, the necessity is the mother of invention. And what are we going to require? What, how is our development going to trend in different directions, working from home or whatever it may be to adapt to all of those changing needs? And, and I think that, you know, that the, where we were two years ago and where we're going to be two years from now are to be worlds apart. And like Andy mentioned, schools even, how are, how are we going to adapt to that? What, what is it, what are the good things that we will experience over the last year that we're going to want to take with us? And it's going to be very, very interesting to see.
Thank you very much. If no, oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I'm happy to go. So another staff member rather go first?
You've already unmuted. Go for it.
Okay. You know, Greg, I, I also think it's going to be different. I know there's a lot of people that says, that feel that we're going to go back the way we came. I, I'm more in your camp. I, I'm not sure we're going to. And you know what struck me, and I'm sure you guys caught on to this. I guess I'm, I'm maybe a little slower, but I never thought it's the world of the city. This thing is called World City. Oh my, you know, think of, we, the boundaries are getting so blurry now. It really is one world city. And that sort of struck me as I was thinking about the different speakers and their perspectives, is although they shared where they were from, so many of the perspectives felt so universal to me that it didn't matter that it was Singapore or Chicago or Toronto or wherever, is that we, because we're going through this COVID thing, have a shared experience that I'm not sure we really ever had before that we talked about during the experience itself. So that in and of itself is probably going to change how we do work together. And, and to me, if for nothing else, that was a useful takeaway is now it's so much easier for us to think about international experiences. A couple other things on the go back to work, don't go back to work flexible. I, I can't imagine that workers will now agree from an eight to 5:30, be there, punch the clock if I don't have to world anymore because they've proven to their employers that they don't really have to do that. So I think so many of those metaphors that we had about when traffic will happen, how we think about the flexible work day as much as the flexible work, all of those things, I, I agree with you, Greg, I think are going to be entirely different. Couple of things that I thought were really interesting in the Oakland A's example where they built a ballpark, but they use the ballpark, the way they thought about it, it's a ballpark for 100 days a year, but it's our park for 265 days a year. What do we want to do at our park? So the idea of, of not having single-purpose buildings, I think we should wrestle with. What does a multi-purpose building look like? What does a multi-purpose, is it an office building? Is it an office and then it becomes a retail building? And I, I don't know, but I was so struck by that. I thought, well, duh, why wouldn't you make the ballpark? And yet, I'm going to guess Huntington Park and some of those ballparks are not being used when they're not, you know, yes, an occasional concert, but really saying it's a people's amenity. I, I found that interesting. And the idea of shared experiences, I think one of the things, and I'll talk about the first example, that makes Dublin work is that we have so many shared things. We have Irish festivals, we have parades, we have events, we have activities where we can all say, are you going to go there this year? I mean, even, to me, that is going to be so important moving forward. And that, that was highlighted. And the one final thing I'll, I'll say is I thought the idea about how technology is actually going to, going to migrate. They talked about TikTok being this 10-second They talked about TikTok being this 10-second slice of communication. I don't, I don't know which one, I think I maybe went rogue and listened to a different one too. But our ability to communicate with each other in 10-second slices is really going to get really useful going forward. And we didn't realize that we were being TikToked or we were TikToking, but that 10-second thing. And I just, there'll be more examples like how we think about that. So lots of food for thought, but how exciting, really. So that was my takeaway. Thanks.
That's great. And I heard that as a proposal that the next activity, we're going to go down to 10 seconds from three minutes or two minutes. How about one more staff member and council member Ludo, who would like to go first? I think Matt would like to share at some point, but it doesn't matter to me who goes first. Matt, go ahead.
Thanks, Brandon. Sorry, just a little delay on the uptick there. I watched the remote work in the Cities for the People of Tomorrow. On the remote work, I guess what I was most interested in or satisfied with was that I heard the questions that they were asking, and they're the same questions that we've been asking. So I took some solace in the fact that we don't have the answers, but I think we're asking the right questions with regards to remote work. So if those were the best people in the world to talk about this, we've got the same questions they do. So we can work towards the answers at the same rate that their work approaches, and hopefully a little faster. But we all understand the question. And I think there really is some question as to digital nomads and what that means, and how far can we really work remotely? I know from an internet perspective, yeah, that it's all the same internet, but are you really going to go to a financial advisor if you live in Dublin, who's on a beach in Fiji? Like, really? I don't know, versus a guy that's just down the street talking to you digitally. I think there's some question there about that or vice versa. So I wonder how long that norm will take, because at least I could come see you if I wanted to. And if you're in Fiji, I really can't. And I might wonder how much you're charging me and why, and what a few dollars and all those types of questions. I guess the second part of that was, I was really struck by, Phil figure, the, the talk of the genie coefficient in the People for the Cities of Tomorrow, when they asked them kind of at the end, just casually, why are these Danes such great city makers? And they started to talk about Denmark being a small homogeneous country. And I thought, boy, you guys have it so easy. It must be nice to be small and homogeneous and have everybody agree and everybody has about the same amount of money and nobody wants to be a billionaire. Because we have a whole lot more interesting culture and group of people and problem and kind of opportunity, if you will, here. And then it started to get me thinking a little bit about kind of the diversity and inclusion aspect of what we're going through here as a city and what we're really going through here in a country. And how much of our placemaking is to be inclusive of all people versus how much of our placemaking is to sometimes exclude the people who don't want to come to that place? And what does that even look like? And I don't know enough about planning to know those tools, but it got me thinking about that. How do we build a place that everybody wants to go to, but might be more reflective of a certain perspective than than a homogeneous society like the Denmark might have? Because we're not going to, we're not going to have that. So certainly me thinking about what kind of places we would want to create and what those would look like, because they're not all going to look the same like they might in, in some cities. And then the other thing that I kind of thought was interesting was that they talked about the every third street being a greenway. And I don't think we have enough streets for every third street to be a greenway, but it got me reminded to my son, two years ago, did summer camp here in Dublin, and he stayed, I drove to work at City Hall, the old City Hall. And the summer camp was up at Griselle Middle School. And he's 12 years old, but was able to get on his bike and take a bike path from one end of the city to the other, basically biking from City Hall to Griselle on the bike paths. And how that is very similar experience to this greenway kind of transportation that they were talking about, that you could go anywhere on a bike and traverse the city and kind of appreciated the perspective that it's hard to do mass transit with single family homes, but that our bike paths simulate that experience and what value that had to him. So those were my thoughts.
Thanks, Matt. Council member Ludo?
Sure. Thanks, Brandon. So, I mean, I don't want to repeat a bunch of stuff that people have said, but the People of Tomorrow, I did think that walkability was a pretty big takeaway there. I agree that sort of getting back to basics and simplifying, to me, was the big message there, but I think it's interesting, as I've listened to everybody talk about, you know, does Dublin want to grow? But I think the space where Dublin has the ability to grow is then in being able to provide more of what our residents want. So having that agility and the ability to pivot when it's needed and when it makes sense to do so, rather than physical growth. And that was sort of how I thought about that as I was listening to that. I mean, remote work is one of those things that's going to be really interesting. I think as technology changes, we'll change too. You know, it's interesting, I think about, you know, my situation at work. I've on boarded two people, including a director, who have never actually worked with our team, because we on boarded them you know, after March. And I I look at their experience and how that differs from the experience of onboarding somebody face to face, and how can we make that better? And how can we help to work with that? And what is that going to look like in the future? And it is hard to tell. I mean, I think we'll end up with a a variety of hybrid styles that are almost as unique as every individual. And as unique as each business and agency can be, because people will have different needs. And I think it's, again, that speaks to that agility and the ability to pivot where it's important. Some of the other stuff that I watched, the future innovations, there were a lot of, you know, big city ideas in there. And some of them were super interesting, and some folks have already mentioned a few of them, so I'm not going to repeat them. So some of them, I wasn't sure how really like super applicable it was to a city like Dublin, but I think some of the ideas or the notions behind those innovations are, there are things we can extract and sort of small them down, if you will. So there could be, you know, some of those creative innovation nuggets that we could take from them. Might be kind of interesting to talk through in the future. The, the public health conversation was an interesting one. You know, we, for Dublin, it's really more about partnerships, I think, than it is because we don't have our own public health agency within the city of Dublin. So it's about how, how can we be better partners with our public health agency that we partner with? How can we, and I don't know, I mean, I feel like Dublin did a phenomenal job in this crisis that we're currently in in partnering with our public health partner. And in working through some of the really difficult decisions that we had to work through and doing it quickly and in ways that made sense. I think it's interesting when you listen to the different experiences and how people react to government interventions as well as different technology solutions. But those are all things that we can learn from in the future as well. And that's part of the process here as we eventually move into post-COVID, as it would be with any post-emergency, right? You want to take a look at what went well, what didn't go well, what can you learn from it? I actually watched also the Cities at Night, which I thought was pretty cool. I loved how they really compared, you know, city day life to city nightlife. And again, a lot of people watch that one, so I'm not going to repeat, but I did think that the social environment does change when you go from a city in the daytime to the city at night. So I thought that the difference is there and how we are working in Dublin. The historic area with this new Bridge Park area, and this is the worst part about being online, is I talk with my hands at halftime, you can't see my hands, and the other half the time they pop up and it's I just feel silly and I've got to stop talking with my hands. It's the Italian in me. I can't help it. I'm sorry. Anyway, so I think a lot of these things are concepts that we're already working on. So it was really interesting just to see a glimmer of some of these different concepts and to just think about them in the context of Dublin and what we're working on. And certainly connectivity and connectedness were big themes among all of the, the, the different programs that they were offering to listen to. So that's it. Thanks. The end.
The end. That's, that's how my, my 13-year-old ends things. She just says, and yeah. So the end, that works as well. I have two, two more. We're going to squeeze in real quick. Daviani wanted to share something short and Colleen, and then we are going to move on. And it's not to exclude anyone, but we do have a few other fun activities. But this has been really good. I will show you the notes we've been taking, but all of you have been absorbing and listening, and this will help us out. So if Daviani, you don't mind going next, and then Colleen can bring us home.
Thank you, Brandon. I mean, what great takeaways from all of these sessions. And I tend to agree a little bit with all of you. But to Vice Mayor DeRosa's point, I do think that post-COVID land use planning, especially city planning will be a little bit different than what we have been doing in the past. Especially lot of land use assumptions, mobility assumptions, our dependence on cars that will be challenged, and we will have to try and adapt to new situations. Like, everybody talked about the zoning codes and other systems that we currently have are slightly outdated systems and with world that's going toward more IoT, technology-based, digital nomads, all of that. Our, our systems are taking a little bit longer to catch up with. And that's where I think we will see a little bit discrepancy until we are there. One thing that stuck to me, we talk a lot in land use planning about density. And in one of the sessions, they had a different definition of density as we are talking about housing and other mixed-use areas. And that was, it's the measure of intensity of social interaction versus number of units. And I thought that was an excellent, excellent idea, how to, how do we measure density? And also Cities of Trust, that was another takeaway for me is, was how do we measure as we start looking into performance analytics and database decision-making? How do we measure, we are the city of trust, how do we measure balance city? And they did have really good ideas in some of the sessions. So I'm, I'm excited to, for this process and how we all collaboratively can come up with great solutions. All right, Brandon. Thank you.
Thanks, Daviani. Appreciate that. And so next, if, if Colleen, you don't mind, and then, then we'll move on to our next section. Thank you.
So yeah, with the shaping the future of the remote working, what I found really interesting, and this was in several of them, there was a lot of talk about millennials. And I have Gen Z's at home. And my neighborhood is filled with Gen Alphas. And no one's talking about them, how much they hate online school. And how much they want to be around people. And they, they do not like being trapped behind a computer. So they're calling them these COVID kids. So that was something that I didn't hear, that I wanted to throw out, was that there was a lot of talk about millennials. And millennials are approaching like 30. So I think it's important to be thinking about the kids that are in high school now, the kids that are in middle school now, and maybe some of their preferences and how COVID has changed their preferences, because they've been locked behind computer screens since March. And I think that will influence what they want going forward. My kids want to go to big schools for college and be able to be around lots of people. They say, when they see me working from home, they're like, that's miserable. I don't know how you're doing that. They can't wait to be around other people. So that's just something to consider. And then I'm sure everybody wants me to comment on the future of, of office. It's, it's just too early to tell because of COVID. But, you know, looking ahead regardless of COVID, yeah, office space is changing. But I still feel that there are going to be companies who want their people back together. Because creativity works very well when people are together, and that's very hard to do over Zoom. So there are going to be companies that, because of the bottom line, will go remote, because it makes the most sense, especially smaller companies. But I think larger companies, for the sake of creativity, are going to want their people together. So I think, you know, for everything we lose, we'll gain. I think it'll be a toss-up.
Hey, Colleen. One of the questions I asked myself, and I'm curious about your thought, is companies want their staff to be together. Is it, they want their staff to be together all the time or some of the time? And if it's a some of the time, what might that mean for offices in the future? That's one of the stretches to me, because I think the hybrid thing is probably right. When I don't want to do it all of the time, but I want it some of the time, what, what's that's going to mean? I'm curious what you thought about that.
So I go to the world of real estate. And if you are a building owner, you're going to make a company sign a five-year lease. So whether your people are there or not, you're paying the rent. So unless you're going to find building owners who are willing to do these really short-term leases, which isn't fiscally responsible for them, I, I think, I think the real estate market will make that hybrid thing really hard to do in a lot of cases. So you know, one of the towers downtown just sold for millions, and they're banking on people coming back. So I don't know if that answers your question, but, but I still feel like the real estate market is, as much as the hybrid world and some working from home and, you know, switching around and being really flexible, real estate's not flexible. So.
I just wondered, do three companies come together and sign a lease for a space? Or, I mean, you know, do things like that start to happen that we?
You know, I think it'll, I think it will maybe make coworking spaces more successful. People will look to do memberships at coworking, which means coworking spaces have to lease more space. But three companies coming together is really tough, because who do you do the credit check on, right? So unless there's a lot of subleasing going on and those kind of deals being made, I really think that the coworking spaces are the ones that are going to come out ahead here. Like WeWorks was really struggling. I think with this whole new world, they're probably going to come out of this pretty good.
Hey, Colleen, I would agree with you, and I feel like my children have decided they will not work remotely. That is going, and I think a lot of the millennials, a lot of, I have a niece that's getting ready to graduate from Ohio State. You know, she's been in virtual school, and she's like, I want to go to work somewhere where you go to work. Now, that may not be 40 hours a week in the same spots, but I would tend to agree. I think I don't mind it as much as younger people, because of the relational aspects.
Hey, if I could throw one thing in, I'm not doing a full contribution in this section. But, and I would never disagree with my friend, Colleen. But I guess what I would ask us all to think about is when we think about virtual reality today, it is not the virtual reality that we may have five years from now. And I think all of us have been experiencing some of these conferences or our conference technology that has us in a simulated room together. And while many of us have been booking 45-minute or one-hour calls with us, some people are using the technology to just sort of have an all-day room. And they are simulating being together and achieving some of the creativity for which people don't want to just do completely remote. And today, that's really not going to work. But if you had a three-dimensional image of a person sitting across from you or at a whiteboard, you might have a different experience with creativity. And the other thing I want to say about that, and I don't think that that diminishes the amount of office space that people may rent or lease, because they are going to have to have that space for some of this technology to be in. But some of our desire to build teams in that way can be offset by the enormous amount of talent that you can source around the world. So if you can get the best talent from Japan, from Norway, from Brazil and from Canada, that may offset some of the desire to not work from home. And so I, I think often we look at what's possible with the technology we're using today and not the technology that's going to be available again in 10 years or something like that.
And I think if we look at the technology of today, like I'm in trouble. I have to do this call from the office tonight, because Delaware County internet is so bad, it might as well be a third-world country.
I can't help but wonder too, as we talk about this, and I only take a second here. But I can't help but wonder what the true physical, we're social animals, right? Human beings are social animals. They want to be around other human beings, right? And I agree with Doug. I do think that if you get to a place where technology makes you feel comfortable, like right now, I don't even like to see, I like to see the faces, and the ones that are blank make me feel like I'm not connected to them. It's just a sense that you get when you're on a Zoom call or when you're on a Zoom meeting. But I suppose if you felt like you were actually sitting in the room with someone, you could fill that void. But I think that whatever we do when it comes to hybrid or, or remote, we have to find a way to fill the void that you miss. we have to find a way to fill the void that you miss by being in the warmth of the presence of another person. And I think that's what all these kids are saying, Colleen, you're right. They play video games all day long and love every minute of it remotely, but they would much rather be playing out in the backyard together. That's just the way we are wired. So even if we manage to do hybrid and do it successfully, we still have to fill the void in other areas with those social density connections that we are seeing people face-to-face, warmth-to-warm. I think that's essential to be successful as a successful city or a successful working environment.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's what I was really taking away from some of the conversation that I heard is that there's going to be as many either all-work, all-at-home, hybrid situations as you can possibly imagine. And I do think that the real estate market's going to have to do some changing. I think that the way that companies work together and with their workers, it may be that they say, look, we're going to do 50% of our workforce is going to be 50% online and 50% at work, and the other 50% is going to do this, that, or the other. So they may still be able to lease a space, but maybe it's not as big of a space as the original space that they would have, because a portion of their workforce is working partially from home. And I think that that is what cities are going to have to respond to. And that's hard, right? Because it's not a traditional model, and it's not how we traditionally think about things. But like, if I think about how I'm recruiting people now for these positions that I have open, my recruiting tools are actually a little bit different. So if you think about how it affects not just the physical spaces that you have, but also the tools that you have to bring people and knowledge workers into your city, it's just really going to be different, and it's going to be, I think, a little bit all over the map. I think there are people definitely who want to be in the office. I would say that when we can, we're probably going to go back to having people in the office, because having that face-to-face creativity is there, but I can tell you, it's probably not going to be 100% all-in all the time. It's going to be some kind of a hybrid model. And it'll probably depend on each person and each team as to how that hybrid model is going to work. But that's part of how I'm going to keep staff happy. It's part of how I'm going to recruit people, so that I can let them know, hey, we can set this great schedule for you. So I guess I agree with all of you, right? I'm not disagreeing with any of you, because I think you're all right in just some different capacities. But that's the agility that I think is going to be really important for cities as they plan.
And this is what I think, too, looking at our commercial spaces, right? Diversity is going to be really important, because if you look at the flex spaces that we have, those typically aren't filled necessarily with employees, but it's employees and goods and call centers and tech spaces. So those types of buildings, I think, will be more successful, at least, you know, for the short term here. You know, look at our medical facilities, right? Yeah, you can do telemedicine, but there's still things that you need to do in person, whether it's, you know, some physical therapy or, you know, just surgery, right? Like, you can't do that remotely. So I think the diversity in our product is going to be really important going forward, and maybe finding ways to repurpose some standard office buildings to, you know, bring more amenities in to make them feel a little differently. But yeah, this is one, the diversity in what we build going forward is going to be really important.
So this has been really great conversation, and I do want to move us forward a little bit. And, but I love the fact that you guys are openly just unmuting and going forth. If I'm totally off-base, we'll just continue doing that. But there's been a lot of words thrown out, and I love words. And I think what we're hearing with hearing each other describe these things is all the different uses for the same words. So diversity means so many different things, connected means so many different things. So this is all playing right into our hand of what we're going to do next. I would like you, we did have some nice, heavy conversation, and we did do a lot of sharing, which takes a lot of energy, so if you can see my screen again. Now that we've gone to the future, now that we've thought of these things, the first thing I want you to do before you even do these is do something what I call a break. And I call it B-R-A-K-E. And I'm going to say go, and you're going to close your eyes for five seconds. You're going to breathe in and breathe out. Ready, set, go. And we're back. Now, you get two minutes, one and a half minutes. We need to recover a little time here to think of those same two questions or the same two statements that I gave you at the beginning, thinking with a different perspective now, now that you've had a break, now that you've gone to the future, now that we've had this really good discussion. Look at your list, are there any words that bubble up even higher? Are there any words that you would take away? Are there any words you would add? So I'm going to say go, and you can start your list, one minute and 30 seconds. Go. Okay, and we're done. That minute and a half seemed a lot faster than the first two minutes, didn't it? Went by rather quickly. Okay, I'm still sharing my screen, I believe. Yes, I can see it on Deviani's monitor over there. What we're looking at here is a tool we've been using in the virtual space called Miro. There's a couple of these, they're digital whiteboards on steroids. And they've been proving themselves to be pretty useful. We can unleash them to participants to have fun with as well. And something we've talked about, this is a new pattern and a new way for us to engage. Even when we take our next steps in future workshops or work sessions with the public, we can engage in various ways like this. But what I wanted to show you is this is what we were busily taking notes on while you guys were all talking about the World City 2020. And right now, what I'd like you to do, we're going to do something else called stacking. And stacking is when, I'm going to call on three people, so I'm going to call someone's name. So I'll say Jenny, and then I'll say Councilmember Keeler, then I'll say Deviani. Jenny goes, and then I will say after that, Councilmember Keeler, Deviani, and Matt. And that way, we can kind of get through everyone rather quickly. But what I would like you to do is give us two, and if you really need to, your third favorite word of any of your lists. So I'm going to stop sharing the screen, just so I can pay a little more attention. Actually, let's leave it. If it's a repeat, go ahead and just let us know, and we can type it in, or we'll keep track of that on the side. So let me get my trusty list out. And so this time, what we're going to do is we're going to start with Megan O'Callaghan, and we'll go to Jenny, and then we will go to Councilmember Keeler.
Innovative.
Okay. Anymore?
Oh, I'm supposed to keep going? I thought I was just.
You can give us two, I want at least two, but three if you really have a third one.
Okay, innovative, strategic, global, forward-thinking.
Okay, three, three, we're going to cut you off at three there.
Okay.
We got global. Okay, and I'm sorry, I have already forgotten who I stacked after Megan. And then, okay, so we'll go Jenny, Councilmember Keeler, then Councilmember Fox.
So I had astute and intentional.
A-stu-t. We're a team over here. Okay, astute, and what was your next one?
Intentional.
Intentional, thank you very much. Okay, Councilmember Keeler.
Progressive. And innovative. So that's a repeat.
Ooh, we have a fancy sticker for that.
Add connected as well.
Connected. Okay, I'll let Deviani catch up here for a second. Okay. I'm losing you guys, who's next? I don't have a, I can't see the list. I'm trying to go on pictures, and people's pictures keep going on and off.
That's me, Brendan, I think you mentioned me.
Oh, thank you.
Sure. Aspirational. And holistically supportive. Those are my two, I'll leave it at two, so you have room left on your board for the others.
Okay, oh, we've got plenty of space, we've got copies.
My third one was authentic.
Okay. If anyone else wants to jump in there, I'm trying to redo my list here.
I'll go, this is Christina. Unique and engaged.
Okay, how about Doug, then Councilmember Peterson, then Homer?
I had conscientious and ambitious.
You guys are testing Deviani. We'll clean it up with spell check later, Deviani.
Sorry, Deviani.
If you do have repeats, feel free to add them. It can be a waiting thing as well, but we love all these words, these are great. This should start reminding you of all kinds of great games you may have used to play, like Baldur's Dash and various things like that. Okay, Councilmember Peterson, Homer, and Councilmember Reiner.
And we're just doing the Dublin is successful because it is a blank community question, right?
That's correct.
I had fiscally responsible. I had forward-thinking, but I think Megan actually said that. And then able, am I allowed to explain what I mean by stable?
That would be wonderful.
It doesn't matter what you put, stable is what I would put a little square there. But I think there is a great amount of stability in our community, in our staff, in our city government, all is a very stable process. And I think that is, it's a, one of the reasons why we're so successful.
Great, thank you for that. Homer, Councilmember Reiner, and Colleen.
Okay, so we haven't typed the word on there yet, but the forward-thinking is one that I said, and Councilmember Peterson, and Megan had said it as well. You might want to put a couple dots on that one. I put trustable. And I put resourced.
Fine art, this is Councilmember Reiner, well-planned and business-funded.
Great, thank you. And we have Colleen, Matt, and Dana.
I said proactive and visionary and fiscally smart.
I had forward-thinking, which has been said a few times, and purpose-driven.
Oh. You can just use the other ones, Deviani, sorry. Sorry, Matt, could you repeat those real quick?
Forward-thinking and purpose-driven.
Forward-thinking. And did you miss one, Colleen? Sorry. Colleen, what was yours again, Colleen? Sorry.
I think that last one was fiscally smart. Proactive, visionary.
Okay. All right, good, thank you. And then how about Dana, Mayor Amber Rose Grooms, and Vice Mayor DeRosa?
I also had well-planned was my first one, innovative was my second one. And then I had diverse or growing diversity, emerging diversity, something like that. Changing, maybe changing is another way to look at that same thing. That's all I had.
Thank you. Mayor Amber Rose Grooms, Vice Mayor DeRosa, and then Sue Bernas, please.
I also had well-planned, and I had organized. Place for everything and everything in its place.
Okay, Vice Mayor DeRosa, Sue, and Jennifer. And I think that's everyone, but if I miss someone, sorry, you get to go last. Deviani gets to go.
I put, and I don't know how to say it, well-cared-for or well-maintained city. I had some of the other duplicates, but these are additional ones. And I think we're successful because we're a city of neighbors who care for neighbors.
Okay.
Fiscally responsible, put three dots there.
Got that one, okay.
Thanks.
Sue and Jennifer.
I had well-planned, smart, and vibrant. And I had resilient, nimble, and then I also had visionary and innovative.
Okay, Deviani, you can go, and I'll type for you.
I wrote balanced, and I also wrote progressive.
Okay, thank you very much. This is great. What I was hoping is you'd use some of the words that we used earlier. So I'm not going to share my words, because I'm going to share them in a different way here. But you can see, as we, again, as we think and as we know, in reviewing some of the notes from your retreat in February, these types of things keep coming up and keep coming up, and we start to really get those themes. And that's really where I wanted to spend just one minute or two kind of going over and re-level setting for us of where we are in this process or where we see ourselves in this process. Bear with me for just a second. Got a lot of moving parts here. We're back to the slideshow. Okay, so we had distributed a little bit of information before this meeting, discussing and describing kind of what guiding principles are, what we're after, what our version of guiding principles are, and kind of how those fit in a strategic planning process. And Councilmember Keeler mentioned at the very beginning, kind of the plan and path. So you either know that, or you looked at my graphics, so I thank you, where we look at our mission, vision, and our values get tucked in there as well as guiding principles. Something that's come up over and over, and especially in my role now with performance analytics, is adding some things in there like vision and measurement. Where can we measure the things that we say we want to do? And how do we want to go forward? And so you've seen this graphic a couple of different times, and this is spun out of, from your retreat and other information that we've gathered and discussions that we've had. And there were these four large thematic areas that you were all wanting to talk about, and we have those planned for future workshop sessions and public engagement. Where we really want to focus the rest of today and probably the next portion of the next workshop is in this framework idea, this framework area, we're looking for those guiding principles for those things that are such a high level that no matter what changes around us, it keeps us who we are. How do we achieve the vision we're trying to achieve? How do we achieve the mission that we're out there? The guiding principles should be, again, a little more like core values, but have a little more teeth to them. They should be somewhat more action-oriented and a bit more descriptive. There really are buckets that contain all the different objectives and strategies and plans and work that we do. And so so far today, what we've done is, I think we're at the right level when we see and hear those different words that we were just mentioning and sharing with each other. That's exactly where we want to be with this. Sorry, I lost my mouse there. So again, we're in the cycle of planning and strategic planning. We're at this level where we want to stay out of the weeds a little bit. We want to keep a 30,000-foot view. We want to answer those questions how? And to do that, we'll go back to our other screen and look at this tool, because we've pre-created a few things for you to talk about. Somehow I can't end my slideshow. Thanks. So of these words, we had already kind of set up our next example of how we might want to get to developing something like a guiding principle. So we heard the word connected a number of times. So we heard the word connected a number of times. Someone please pipe up if this is way too small on your screen or anything. If it looks good, I'll just keep going. So this is just an example. We, we had gone through the notes. We, you know, different staff discussions, council discussions and those types of things. Pulling on just our, our staff experience as well. And thinking, what are some of these super level words we can use to describe Dublin? So Dublin's successful because it's a connected community. That word is loaded, as I mentioned earlier. Words have many different meanings. And this is where we're trying to get, and this is where the fun comes in, where we get to weigh in and think what's the best word. Is this the word that we want to use to describe it? The next level of, of what we think of is when we say Dublin is a connected community because we focus on something. This is our intent, and this is kind of the how, and this is what gives it the meat. We want to say that we're a connected community because we focus on things like broadband and including people's voices. We're connected because we have neighborhoods that are connected to their neighborhoods. A play on words, we're connected because our roadways connect to each other and bikeways and people and goods can move around our city. So this is kind of the, the path that we're taking in terms of developing, what are some of our anchor points? And we're really looking again for two to five kind of guiding principles. We've seen some really good examples from some different communities where they have kind of one, two-word statements that can stand on their own and it means something. And then they add a little bit of descriptive verbiage to it, just maybe a sentence or two. And then we see lists where people say, well, connected means this to us. What does it mean to you? And so what we thought we could do with the rest of our time tonight, which we did spend a little more time than anticipated on our discussion, but I think it was very much well worth it, and, and we're still moving along at a nice clip, is that we can show you some of these that we put together as examples. We can dive into one of these and start discussing it. And so what I'm going to do is just pause for a second to see if there's any input at this moment before I describe a little bit more this one and some of our other examples. We're good? Okay, so what we also anticipate doing is taking the words that you gave us and the different thoughts from the world cities and then as well, how you described Dublin, and getting those in place in all of these, and that'll be our follow-up information that we'll be giving back to you so that we can start gathering even more input. So this one, does it, does it seem to make sense? We'll just do kind of a general, you know, it might need some more thinking. We hate it, we love it. It sounds good. But it's the intent of how we're trying to build, build these clear.
So Brandon, let me ask you, when, when you're, as you finish this out, as you write this, Dublin is a, as an example, Dublin is a connected community because we focus on. Are you looking for one or two words out of here? And then, as you said, a sentence to clarify it? Is that kind of where this is going to go? And is that becomes a principle?
Yes, I, that's the pattern that we're trying to follow is, is if it's on the right track, we'll be able to flesh out a little bit more words of, of, for these. And the reason we're doing this, this level here that we're describing why we're connected is because that really starts to play into when, when we look at those themes. When we talk about land use and we talk about density, what are some of our overriding thoughts that will guide us in, in how we would make those decisions? You know, for instance, I heard tonight we talked a little bit about growth. Add growth or having growth or no growth or controlling the type of growth we're having. What do we want to attract here? Again, because if we have another three or four of these guiding principles, we may say, well, you know, connected means we want these neighborhoods to be very close together. But then we may go look at another guiding principle, which might be, for instance, sustainable. And we may say, well, something conflicts that, that, you know, we, we want to call ourselves sustainable. And, and much like Councilmember Peterson did in describing these words, we need a little bit of definition behind them so that, for instance, he used the word stable in the definition behind and kind of the description behind stable added a lot of meaning to that. And again, we want to be able to use guiding principles as a lens to look at any of those following decisions or goals or objectives or services we provide. So for instance, this one was sustainable, you know, different words could be tossed out there, resilient, enduring, stable. But, but again, thinking larger, where sustainable doesn't just mean the environment. It means fiscal sustainability. It means our population. It means looking at things like our innovation, how we go about that, about our healthy citizenry, the live, work, and play, those types of things.
Yeah, and just as a suggestion, I think sometimes too, many times these graphics, as I noticed on the examples that you sent, they're in a list, but some of the ways that I think, at least for me, it works, is when they're in a circle and the, the mission of the, or your, your value statement or your mission statement is the center so that as you have your guiding principles, or for us in our community plan, there are building blocks, we call them our building blocks, that they all relate so that, as you said, you always beta test one against another to make sure that sustainable also is connected. Do you know what I'm saying? So that every, it's comprehensive enough so that you can, you can use each of the building blocks to play off each other to make sure that holistically at the end, you have integrated at least as many as possible into the principles of creating the final end product. Makes sense?
That makes a lot of sense to me, and I think that as we move forward and develop these, that's, that's exactly where we get. Sometimes when we build something out like that at, at the beginning, it gets a little overwhelming. And I know there's, we're already throwing a lot of boxes at you.
Right.
Just as another example of something we built, you know, if anything, a little bit of just using this time to familiarize you with, with kind of how we've been thinking and how we've interpreted what you've, you've already worked on. So in this case, beautiful. And we heard some other words pop up. We heard beautiful. We heard well maintained and all of those types of things. If we had as one of our guiding principles, and beautiful is definitely loaded because that can be very subjective as well. But when we start to think about how we act and behave and where we put our time and focus and energy to create a beautiful place, what are those types of activities and how do we get there? And so this one is where we find, you know, some of our policy decisions or how we enforce code enforcement. Our love of trees or the, the pocket parks and reserves that Councilmember Reiner mentioned. Designing for people, all these types of things, you know, we, we heard even more of this from when you were all discussing the world cities. Because you're really starting to think further down the line there.
Okay, great. It's a fun practice.
Okay, so I'm going to go. We have two more and then we can go back to any of these and dive in just a bit more if you'd like. So we had trusted as well. Earlier tonight, I heard interesting, an interesting phrase, people first. Can be very explicit and very nice, but when we think trusted, trusted is a little higher level than just safety or just diversity, inclusion, or transparency. You know, you could argue easily that any one of these could be switched with trusted as well. And again, it's, it's word games, but without, I think without having somewhere to start with, you know, either from your input from the previous exercises or from some of the, you know, your past information that we kind of analyzed and things we've come up with, this is again, meant to be conversation starters, so. Okay, I'm going to move one last time. I think we have one more? Do we have four? Oh. The one we, we talked about and thought of was balance. When we look at our introduction in the community plan, we talk about in, in our slogan of, you know, where history meets the future. I think we're really, really good at balance here. We, we balance the live, work, and play aspects. We, we try to balance our land uses, you know, for our, for our other ultimate goals and those types of things as well. So I'll let you just kind of read through this one for a second. I'll get a drink. Okay, so does anyone have any, anything that piqued their interest or would like to dive in and discuss? Our other option is we can build our own from some of your earlier words. And yet the third option is that we can take your words and the notes from the discussion and compile all those and kind of recraft these and get them to you in a way that you can provide comments. Or we can use as kind of kickoff and starting points for our next sessions.
Brandon?
Yes?
It's Sue. And you know, I'm always going to give the, the perception viewpoint here. I look at the word balanced and, and I could really guess that many people outside of our community would not consider Dublin successful because it is a balanced community. For many reasons. The use of space, the housing, whatnot, especially as we're approaching diversity and inclusion. Those are some of the topics that we've been hearing from some of the people that we're engaged with, with the task force and the advisory committee. So I guess again, it all depends on how you define balanced.
Well, another question to that point, Sue, though, is this aspirational on our part, or is this public facing? You know, is this something that we are going to residents and saying, this is why we're great? Or is this something we're using internally as a team to say this is what we think we should be in a 2035 context?
You're absolutely right. It should be aspirational.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
It should be aspirational.
Yeah.
So Brandon, to that end, and the Dublin is successful because, or Dublin will be successful in 2035 because, right? That's what I'm hearing both of you say. That's what we're trying to do, right, Brandon? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, in one case, you could think of it in terms of talking to yourself from 2035 or how you're introducing the city to a resident of 2035. And they say, you know, your vision was global city of choice vibrant, all, all these things. How did you possibly get here? How did you approach that problem? How did you, what did you really pay attention to? And where did you put your focus? And where did you intentionally walk to get to that point? So in those terms, certainly aspirational. Again, this is a really good point as far as words. Words are going to, you know, as, as long as we define them as what they mean for us. And putting that lens on Sue is, is very important. What, what if, when someone reads this, without reading the definition, what will they gather from it? So all part of the exercise, I think.
And you know, one of the big takeaways to me for all the different sessions that I wa, watched was the degree that we need to be flexible going forward. So from balanced, you know, the ability to say, we, we've, we have to be able to do multiple things, right, effectively. So I thought that was a clear takeaway from the session is because we don't know what the future will be. But whoever has got the ability to be the most flexible, the most nimble may in fact, I think Darwin said that, right? Be the survivors.
I think it's, it's a bit confusing right now because the question or the space is asked in present tense as to why we think it's successful today. But if we're filling this out as to what we think 2035 looks like as a successful community, it could have different words because we may, you know, as we spoke about the world city and some of the things that, that were visionary, I guess. You know, I, I think that it, it can be different. It's, it's a beautiful community today. What could it look like in 2035 if we enhance some of the wonderful, beautiful aspects of it that we appreciate today, but maybe haven't grown to their full potential? And the same thing with the balance. Or our diversity, we're working towards it, but in 2035, will we be balanced? I hope we will. Connected, we're beginning to be connected, but in 2035, what does connected look like? So for me, I need a little clarity here when we do the principles. As to, at what time period are we? What, what place in, in this are we, is it an aspirational? Or is it the way we see it today? I guess I'm a little.
I like the way Doug and Sue put it and Brandon. I think it should be aspirational. So putting ourselves 15 years out, looking back what led to us being successful. If you, if you Google city of Dublin guiding principles right now, we have vibrant, innovative, engaged. I guess I'm curious if we, if we need to reinvent the wheel or if some, there's some overlap between the ones that we've come up with tonight and the ones that we're already using. Innovative is one that was repeated, engaged, and vibrant. All three of those, they're currently on the website. Forward thinking, I think is one that's been very popular tonight. So maybe of those four, we explore some of those. I don't know.
I like the guiding principles here on the right-hand side of the screen in ways that they were very broad. But I also think that as I looked at some of the other cities and, and how they looked at their guiding principles, and one in particular, which was, I think it was Great Britain, was theirs was about their principles about wellbeing. When you get farther along into strategies and measurements, then you can better define what comprehensive means. But, but I think like comprehensive or bold, I think there are some missing ones and we've talked, we've talked about, about trusting, wellbeing, authenticity, all of those. Maybe we can find ways to distill these, these sort of like all encompassing guiding principles like you see on the right-hand side of this page. Enduring, inclusive, innovative, and be more descriptive in what we intend that to look like. You know, then there's the question, are we looking for very specific and very narrow-minded guiding principles? Narrow, not only narrow-minded, but more narrow focused guiding principles. But I, I think that the guiding principles can be broad, but we can be specific in our strategies.
Yes, and, and I think that's a really good point. And that's somewhat the point of this journey as well as, is having something that's your, your, your backing, your backstop. And then in inserting, as we get to the specifics, as we get to tactics of how do we, how do we stay vibrant? Or how do we stay engaged? Again, thinking in terms of, that's a pretty big vision that we have. And if in 15 years we, we achieve it or we reach it, how are we answering those questions? And, and that's where exactly we start to build in with our goals and objectives, the measurements. And, and so we know how well we're doing. So we know when we're done. Being so innovative and so forward leaning as we are, sometimes we don't know we're done. When we're done, we've tried something and we should move on or incorporate it differently. So, so each of those pieces comes into play, I think. And, you know, thinking in terms of with the vibrant, engaged, and innovative, and then again, looking at the list, as you mentioned, Councilmember Keeler, that if we find anything else that kind of has gravity and then pulling together and packaging them. Again, they're just something for you to use as, as tools when we start diving into the specifics of those thematic areas like land use and quality of life. And, and they're supposed to help us answer, you know, any, any larger questions from those. Does anyone else have any other thoughts about how, how we've developed these? Where, where the placement of these goes? Are we good with, with what we've got? Do we, we just add, you know, words? We don't need a lot. These are two on the screen right now are two very different ways of looking at this. One is very action oriented and one is very descriptive. And, you know, it, it can go either way. There's no real rules to all of this. It's more or less our, our comfort level here.
I'm wondering, Brandon, going back to the, the list of words that was created, if there could be maybe a little bit of dialogue around. I mean, we have some repeats and some of them also had some similar overlap that may be helping to, to narrow those down a little more. Might help the conversation here. Maybe I'm off base and somebody else chime in. But again, if we're trying to, to determine, you know, what, what we're looking at, I think, you know, as we talked about the, you know, forward thinking, well planned, I mean, those, again, not that we need to pick necessarily the exact wording, but I think we're seeing some themes and some pieces that, that sort of come together, the nimbleness, astuteness that we're, you know, you're really looking at how those, they overlap. I mean, it's another way of, of saying that. And maybe just a little discussion from the group about which ones are rising to the top to them. And I know this isn't capturing everything because I feel like forward thinking definitely had more than one dot, but so maybe us going back and double checking that. But I guess I'd like to hear a little bit maybe from everybody. I know we're coming to the end of our time here, but I want to make sure we're clear about the direction that we're moving in. And then that helps us form that other slide that you were showing where it's. that you were showing where it's either more descriptive or more clear-cut, I guess.
I think that's a good idea, Jenny.
Okay, with the, we only have 10 minutes left and I, I think what might be best is that if we take a look at this in our other notes and package this up and get you something easier to react to, and we can do that, you know, as a distribution so that those of you that don't like to think and speak at this, you know, in a short term and some of those that like to process and think about things a little bit more, have more time and space for that as well.
Can I suggest something?
Certainly.
Could we just throw out some words that may not be on here that might make us more successful that we don't see today? I don't know that diversity is on, well, emergent diversity, which Dana said is on here. Transparency is something that we've talked about, but I don't really see it here and that's part of trusting. So I wonder if we could add some words that are more aspirational words, words that we'd like to be working towards that maybe are not what we consider high success words for right now. I mean, I think we're a great community, but with every community, there's always something that you wish were a little bit different and, or a little bit better. And if we're fair with ourselves, what are those words that we could throw up to, to make 2035 an even better city?
And one way to potentially do that for just a minute or two here is look at your list again. Was there something that didn't make the cut to your top three? Do we have enough words, you know, some of those kind of things as well?
I think we've worked very hard to be more engaging and participatory, but I think that's something we're working on constantly.
Yeah, we do have engaged on there.
Is it up there? Okay.
Yeah, it's over on the left in the middle.
Thanks, Homer, I didn't see it there.
I think we should just go ahead and put our three words that show up now. Oh, we got it, we have two of the three, so vibrant was not up there.
Yeah, it's on there, probably far right.
Oh, it is?
Yep, it's there.
I think the hows of where we're going to do this, this is maybe where the rubber's going to meet the road when the, the second part of, you know, we, we picked the words at the top and we do this by, or we will, by 2035, we'll do this by. I think that's the part that perhaps is going to be more difficult, but then again, where the meat is because how you're going to be vibrant in 2035 could very well be different than the things we have to do be, be vibrant today. Is that right, Brandon? Is that sort of the next step of this? Some sort of moving us forward to, so let's say we picked four of these. What would be the next go-forward from that?
Right, we, we can look at the next level if we need to, but really, again, the, the idea behind having these there as a backstop is that if we dive right into our, our themed areas or the building blocks, the land use, that could be absolutely fine if we just have three or four of these guiding principles there that, that again, we kind of check in and as Councilmember Fox mentioned, you're kind of checking back and forth against each other. Are we, are we, are we making decisions, you know, that are really living up to our guiding principles? And, and so that really is where, where that work comes in. So you know, if we decide on a few different words, if we decide on the hows, again, that's why in some of our examples, we built them in where trusted included things like safety because safety actually includes a whole strategic plan by our police department as well as many other things that are, that are happening and going on. So, so yeah, it's just kind of dialing it in a little bit, adding in the more hows. We did have an exercise, we kind of used most of the time where we would take one of these and we would ask you how. So, and, and that starts us down that path as well. And so that can be kind of the next step we focus on.
I really like the guiding principles of that Ola's 2040 because they were so broad, like bold, inclusive, we don't have inclusive in ours, measurable. I mean, those are the kinds of things that I think comprehensive. I really liked those because you could, you could load quite a bit behind those words and, and beta test off of almost anything that you are looking at, whether that's land use or housing or education because are you being comprehensive? Are you being bold? Are you being innovative? Are you being inclusive? Will this endure? Are we flexible enough? Those are the kinds of things that I was kind of hoping that our principles would look like because even though these words are great, it's what makes it successful, they do fall under broader words of, of principles that, that I think are worth looking at.
Okay, unless anyone else has any other feedback as far as, as what we need to work on, I think what we'll be doing is taking a look at these and packaging and grouping them, getting things put together in a little bit different way to give you a different method to react to them and, and stepping forward from there.
And I think one of the challenges is going to be trying to balance kind of a boots-on-the-ground sort of framework versus a ideological framework. And I, I don't want us to be all of either one of those things, but there has to be a significant balance between, you know, if we're all ideological, then not that. I want us to have something that's executionable at the end of the day and not solely ideological.
So Brandon, so to that end, so next steps would look like you're going to, you're going to go back, you're going to take these high-level principles, you're going to work on the diagrams, we're going to make them forward-looking, right, aspirational, you're going to deliver that back to us. And then to put the meat on the bones, then do we begin to work in those four areas or is the next step to bring in community engagement? What, what is step next? Can you help us here?
I'll lean on Jenny a little bit more for that one.
Okay, Jenny, thank you.
Yeah, so I'm thinking that based on this conversation, I really want to make sure we're tying, I mean, they, we made some pre-populated ones that show how this could work, but I really want to take the words that you all have brought here and make, make that into what is reflective of the discussion tonight because I think that really helps drive home the point of why we wanted you all to watch that and report, report back to each other and have this discussion. I really want that all to tie back really well to that and making sure that ties with your, your council goals for the year. So I think as Brandon suggested, bringing those revised sort of pre-populated ones back to reflect the discussion from tonight for you all to have that look at, react to, and then we can have a discussion to make sure that we're all on the same page about what those, what those look like. Because we really want this to, again, do both things. We want it to be aspirational, but we also want to do, as the mayor said, and make sure that that's something that is something we can implement and, and work through on a daily basis. It's got to sort of be both things and how we do that. And I want to make sure that that's accurately reflecting what you all are talking about and what you've shared tonight. So that to me would be the next step. So that probably means us meeting again to look at that before we would then begin the public input part because we want to make sure that we're getting your feedback first in a clear direction and then we can take that to our boards and commissions or the public and get the input and, and see if that's resonating with they, where they are. So I mean, again, you're setting the policy, but also wanting to make sure that we're getting their input and that sort of feeding. And it is kind of a circle as Councilmember Fox said, it's very, it's very circular in how we're, how we're doing this. But that's what I was envisioning, I guess. Does that sound good to everybody, Brandon included? Okay.
It is now eight o'clock. And thank you very much, Brandon. Bravo, a very nice job with a very hard group of people, so to keep in two minutes' time slots. But I thank you for all your work on this and it's been fun to try the new tools too because this is part of what we, we need to learn. So I appreciate that and Jenny, you'll help us bring this back and begin to get some next steps on the calendar. Final thoughts by the group tonight? Well, thank you all.
Thank you, yeah. And thanks for, as Brandon said, thanks for flexibility and trying the new tools and all that. This is a whole new, new world for us too, trying to, trying to take on this really major, important task for the community and, and bring in that forward in a way that we can all contribute. So I appreciate everybody contributing and loved the discussion at the beginning about all the sessions. That was, that was really great. So with that, I'll turn it back to the mayor to adjourn if everybody's ready.
Well, thank you all for your work and watching those videos. I know they were several hours' worth of our time, but I do believe it was time well-spent. Thanks to staff for putting together this tonight and, you know, I don't think we saved...
Uh-uh, I think we may have lost her.
We want to go forward as a team and, and it's good to have all the partners. So if there is nothing further for the good of the order, we will stand and adjourn and have a wonderful balance of your evening.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Jenny and Brandon and everybody for participating and helping put it together. It's great.
Thank you.